Manage student behavior so that what we turn into the state meets their guidelines and meets our guidelines in terms of appropriate proportionality rates and in making sure that support is given to campuses. And so, what you see on the screen is a result of what Student Affairs oversees in our department, which is the data validation piece. And of course, the data validation piece is part of a requirement for our district as a result of continued disproportionality rates amongst our African-American students. We are charged with, as I said earlier, working with these collaborative departments, including the learning support systems with PBIS to ensure that we put measures in place that decrease the need for a removal. And that's what we want to do, is decrease the need for removal and also to make sure we have proper behavior management supports in place to help our children who are in need in that area. And so, we are here tonight as part of that, as part of the compliance piece between our district and the state, and also as a little part of the programming piece that we get to participate in to help in the area of behavior management in our district. Yeah, I do want to acknowledge my team from the Department of Student Affairs. I think I see a few people here. Stand up if you are part of the Department of Student Affairs, please, and be recognized. Thank you, Amanda Hartley. Thank you, Amanda.
Okay, so when we started to do this board update, we wanted to, you know, creating the report, we wanted to ask ourselves three questions. And, you know, and I think it's really important to preface this, that, you know, this conversation with, we recognize that we have to be very intentional when it comes to talking about discipline, about removals, because, you know, first and foremost, we want our staff and our students to be safe. And so, we have to think about and weigh out, you know, the challenges we have with providing a safe, secure environment for our children, but then also, when we do remove students, you know, how are we doing that? Are we making decisions that are appropriate and, you know, that are, that we consider equity and fairness when we do those things? So, we looked at, first of all, we looked at one year, and so, we looked at between the sixteen and seventeen, 2016 and 2017 school year, has there been a decrease in discipline? And we looked at three different areas. We looked at out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, and our discipline alternative education program, and we looked, so we looked at those pieces. And so, we're going to answer those questions through the data pieces. We also wanted to ask ourselves what resources are available to support campuses as we implement PBIS, and then what are the findings and recommendations for continued improvement? So, those are the areas that we're going to be looking at next, and Mary's going to walk us through the actual next three slides, which deal with the discipline data review.
Before I go into the slides, I just want to bring us up to speed on some of the adjustments that took place in the Department of Student Affairs last year. In seventeen eighteen, our department did undergo some adjustments in staffing. An assistant superintendent of Student Affairs was created, along with my position as Executive Director of Student Affairs. And the role of the assistant superintendent was identified as overseeing the performance and the outcome of the actions that I was undertaking as Executive Director to lead the operations and lead the charge for the goals that we had in place to make a difference in terms of student disproportionality. So, as we underwent the alignment in staffing, we also underwent an alignment in protocols and procedures, implemented systems, introduced some training so that District Y, we were all on the same page in terms of our perspectives and our practices as it relates to student discipline, specifically in the Department of Student Affairs, DAEP removals. And so, we were able to collect some data this year at the end of the seventeen eighteen school year. I want to celebrate at the end of this presentation on the data because there are some good things to celebrate here. But I just want to run through the slides right quick. If you'll look at the colors, blue represents all students, green, I'm sorry, orange, orange-yellowish represents, gold, I guess I should say, represents African-American students, and the gray represents our Hispanic students. If you look along the bottom, you can see the year as well as the type of removal. ISS starts off sixteen seventeen, seventeen eighteen, OSS followed by DAEP. So, just a summary at the bottom, you can see that ISS, in-school suspension, increased by sixteen percent. And let me go back and add, this is for our elementary students. You can see that OSS, out-of-school suspension, decreased by fifty-five percent in our elementary schools for African-American students who are still disproportionately represented here. However, that data was collected on OSS and DAEP removals decreased by seventy-nine percent in the elementary schools. Looking at the middle school data, again, you can see the colors and you can see along the bottom, the type of removal as well as the year, comparison of the year. The first one should be ISS, I'm sorry about that. ISS increased by twenty-four percent in our middle schools. OSS increased by one point two percent, and DAEP removals decreased by four point four percent. In our high schools, ISS decreased by one point nine percent, OSS increased by ten percent, and DAEP decreased by thirty-eight percent. And that's the piece that I wanted to celebrate at the end, that we had a significant decrease in DAEP removals, district alternative education placement removals in high school and all across the board, in elementary and middle school. I do say that with caution because we're still working on closing that disproportionality gap, but we are, in my opinion, headed in the right direction in terms of alternative placement removals based on the data we have here.
And one thing we probably should have mentioned earlier is when we talk about disproportionality, there's a lot of different ways to talk about that in a percentage way. And TEA has defined for us that they're going to use something called a risk ratio, and they have given us guidance that if we have anything over two point oh with our risk ratio, then it's problematic. And so, in the previous slides, when you saw, I'll just go back and show you, for example, here, high school discipline data, you see the OSS increased by ten percent, you see the two point three there? That would be a concern for us because what that means is that we have a disproportionality issue with African-Americans there because we're over two point oh. And so, as you go through the slides, the previous slides, you can see, for example, here, the ISS, we're at one point nine, so we're below two point oh. So, even though it's nearing, we're not at a level of intervention. And right now, TEA does not intervene with us unless we're looking specifically through the discipline validation monitoring system through DAEP placements with African-American or Hispanic students. However, as we move through the next couple of years with the federal implications, sorry, there will be a look at disproportionality, and they'll be using that same rate, whether it's two point zero or two point five. There's some discussions because sometimes the feds do it differently than the states. But we say that because it's important, not only is it important because we recognize that we need to ensure, we know what's going on in our communities when we're, when African-American students are more represented in discipline issues, but we also know it's very important because we will be in, you know, dealing with some compliance issues, not only from the state, but perhaps the feds if they continue to implement what's planned in the next two years. There's been a little bit of a hold because at the federal level, they're holding on some of the decisions that would impact states. So, one of the things that we wanted to look at, and this is looking at some historical data, specifically when we're looking at African-American students, and this is real specific because of some of the concerns with the disproportionality. So, when you see this slide, what we're looking at is, we're looking at actions, ISS and OSS actions over a five-year period. And so, you can see how back in thirteen fourteen, the blue bar is ISS and the orange bar is OSS. And you can, these are just numbers, but you can see how things have gone down. It looks like between fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen, we had a small jump in ISS, and then we kind of maintained flat between sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. But what is significant in this slide is, and really specifically, if we look just at, we just looked at seventeen eighteen, we didn't do this with back five years, but if you just looked at seventeen eighteen, I want to point out, you know, last year in Fort Bend ISD, twenty-seven point thirty-six percent of our student population in Fort Bend was African-American. And within the Hightower, Marshall, and Willow Ridge feeder patterns, thirty-six point forty-seven percent of our population is African-American. But when we look at this discipline data, when we look at the total number of ISS action codes for African-American students across the district, we see forty-six percent are from these three feeder patterns. So, you know, that's almost a ten percent increase. And when we look at OSS action codes for African-American students across the district, twelve eighty-seven are almost fifty-seven percent are from these three feeder patterns. So, we have to ask ourselves what's going on, and, you know, we obviously have a suggestion for some disproportionality, but we need to study this deeper to learn more what's going on in these three feeder patterns that would cause this data to be, you know, indicated the way it is. When we look at the same kind of setup over the last five years in the same way, this is looking at discretionary DAEP placements over a five-year period involving African-American students. And again, I go back and say, if we just look at last year, the seventeen eighteen school year, we see, again, twenty-seven point thirty-six percent of all student population in Fort Bend is African-American students, and within those three feeder patterns, we're at thirty-six point forty-seven percent. However, our total number of DAEP discretionary placements was fifty, almost fifty-two percent. So, again, we're suggesting, I mean, there's some suggestion that we may have some, well, we do have some disproportionality. I think we really need to stay this a little bit deeper to know the reason why. And when you go to the next slide, this is, the difference between this slide and the previous slide is this is mandatory. And I think what's significant about this is looking at the same pieces here, when you change things to mandatory placements, you see that, if we're just looking at the seventeen eighteen school year, you see that the total number of DAEP placements was eighty-two, with thirty-six being from the three feeder patterns with the, so that's a forty, almost a forty-four percent of students who had discretionary, I mean, mandatory DAEP placements were African-American from this feeder pattern. So, the percent of, it really, it jumps quite a bit when you go, I mean, it reduces quite a bit when you look at mandatory. So, when you take out the subjectivity of being, of making a decision of whether a student mandatorily has to go to the DAEP and it's discretionary, you definitely see a change in the percentage of students, and that's a cause to look deeper into this data. Okay, so, when we think about, again, you know, we sat down and wrote this, or started to write this presentation, and we worked together between, you know, Michael Ewing and his team, and some of the other departments and Student Affairs, and we talked about, what are some of the lessons learned or some things that we recognize were a challenge this past year that may have prevented things from going as well as they should have gone? And, you know, one of the things that immediately, well, we identified three major areas, and it's overall communication, collaboration, and available training and resources. So, when we think about communication, you know, it's that clear communication, it's do all stakeholders have a good understanding of what's expected at the district level that involves PBIS and at the campus level? And are we using the same terminology and working together? And so, what we found was that there was some, there were some challenges there, that specifically, you know, we had talked to some groups from the campuses, some administrators, but maybe we didn't spend as much time with principals, that we had spent time with DSL, but maybe we didn't give them as much clear information as we needed. And so, when we look back and tried to figure out, you know, where some of the challenges were, that we recognized that, and we take ownership that we, you know, it was the first year with this new team this past year, and as we were implementing things, that we were working really hard but maybe didn't communicate as well as we should have. And when we talk about collaboration, well, when you look that, the beginning, that very first slide, all the departments that are involved is, it's very difficult because everybody's working really hard, and you have to stop and be intentional about working together and communicating between departments. So, we recognize that more of that is needed, and so, we've been working on that already this year. And then the last piece are just available training resources and ensuring that we have, you know, resources that are available for campuses that are consistent across the district. And I say that, you know, some campuses have things available and they're using things, for example, like at Travis High School, you know, the use of habitudes and the things that they're doing are working well for them. But then we have some campuses that don't have the resources available, and so, we need to make certain resources available for all campuses, and they can choose to use those if those are appropriate for their campus. And so, there's some of those, those are some of the lessons learned, and we can kind of, and we added a lot more specifics in the report. When we talk about the next steps and what we're doing now as we move forward, we want to talk about how we can continue with the PBIS implementation, but also work on the sustainability and so that we have good systems in place. And so, first of all, you know, if you look at this slide, you look at the overall, you know, how do we establish this overall PBIS culture and maintain it? And so, we know that there's a need to increase those tiered supports. So, I know you've heard a lot about, you know, RTI, and you know those, you're familiar with the tier one, tier two, two, and tier three. Well, PBIS is the same way, and it's based on that same fundamental research, that you have to have, you know, supports in place for all kids at tier two, and then give a little bit more for that next group, and then there's a small three to five, maybe eight percent of kids who need like a more intensive type of intervention. And so, we have to work on making sure that we're adding, not necessarily more programs, but we're adding to our approach with PBIS and adding some more involved resources, such as, you know, we've talked a little bit about the trauma-informed practices. And so, you know, when we talk about trauma-informed practices, what we're talking about is that there's an awareness that we have children coming to school that may have suffered some really, you know, horrific traumas. And so, how do we acknowledge that, and how do we learn to recognize, you know, when students are suffering, and how are they exhibiting the behaviors, and that we can work together to make sure that not only we recognize the challenges, and then that we can, you know, make referrals or do different things to really help them? So, trauma-informed practices in general can be a tier-one support. So, it's making sure all teachers and all staff have some basic information about trauma-informed practices. But then when we go to kids that really need some more significant help, that have had some significant trauma, we look at things like school-based mental health clinics or centers, and that's another piece that we want to talk about and bring in over the next year. You know, we recently went up to visit Representative Miller in Austin, and he's working on some legislative, legislation for this piece. Austin ISD has implemented school-based mental health centers or clinics at just some high need schools. And so, at that level of that tier three that we talked about, they have utilized vendors that are LPCs or, you know, licensed professional counselors or social workers that actually do therapy at school for a certain number of kids who wouldn't probably get that kind of therapy or help anywhere else. And so, they're doing this with some grant funds, but they're doing this also through that trauma-informed lens. So, that's something that we want to look at, especially for our student, I mean, our campuses that are, that are high needs campuses. And then I, going back to our social and emotional curriculum, because we do have some of, you know, we do have, again, we have things in place across the district, but there's a need to add to and to make sure that we're in alignment with the profile of a graduate, that we are making things available for campuses. So, that's the next piece to really dig into that deeply. Also, within the increasing supervision and support, one of the things that we saw last year with the lack of communication that we talked about was that we need to be very specific and clear. So, you know, this year, Michael Ewing, as the Director for Learning Support Services and his coordinator are meeting with principals every nine weeks to really be specific about their campus, looking at their campus discipline data and creating action plans, and making sure that those plans include identified supports that the campus needs from our, from the district office to help implement things, and then we're sharing those with the Department of School Leadership so that there's not, you know, so that we have complete, clear communication across all stakeholders when we're implementing these things. And then we also know the need to increase our professional development. We have professional development, but oftentimes, we make it available and it's optional. So, we need to really talk about what's optional and what's mandatory, and then how can we target professional development for the campus based on their specific needs? And so, we're working on that. And then, Mary, you want to talk a little bit about the discipline management pieces?
Yes, just as important as the programming piece of what we're doing to close some of these gaps in our discipline management system are the compliance pieces that encompass the discipline management plan. So, in the Department of Student Affairs, we made leaps and bounds last year in terms of addressing, reviewing, and addressing monitoring procedures, administrative procedures, the student code of conduct, and how familiar we are with that in terms of those of us who implement disciplines, specifically campus-based coordinators, making sure that that piece is very clear. We talk about it, we train about it, we become like-minded in terms of what discretionary, what goes into a discretionary decision. Because as Dina was saying, the discretionary decisions, that's the area where we've got more work to do. The student code of conduct does guide us in the area of discretionary decisions. There's, there are a couple of pages in the student code of conduct that speak directly to discretionary removals. But part of refocusing on that is the monthly training that we get to do with our campus behavior coordinators who are charged with discipline on the campus. So, we intend to continue monitoring our data collection, monitoring our disciplinary practices, and to make sure that we join in and use PBIS as a reinforcement, as another framework, not another framework, but a framework that our district, our campus administrators are familiar with whenever they're looking at a disciplinary issue with a student. We talked a lot this year, when we had the opportunity to train all campus administrators in the summer on July the thirtieth, we talked a lot about something we've heard Dr. Dupree talk about, and that's behavior management. I know that as a former principal, it had been a while since we had had conversations, had trainings on behavior management. And now, bringing that back to our attention, bringing that back to our administrators has been very important in moving away from a mindset of discipline management to a mindset of behavior management, which is very different from discipline management, involves routines and practices, safety measures, knowledge, a knowledge level of the expectations from the children all the way up to their parents, to make sure that we set them up for success each and every day when they come to school. As Dina said earlier, we do have a responsibility, campus administrators have a responsibility for keeping their campuses safe, but we also have to have balance in terms of addressing the needs of our students who display challenges in the area of behavior.
Okay, well, I know that was a lot of information in just a brief minute, so...
That was not a minute.
So, and so, if we have any questions, we can certainly address those now.
Mr. Burden, if you don't mind, I would like to point out, during the presentation, we've observed several errors in the presentation. So, you caught a couple of them, but you didn't point them all out, but I just wanted the board to be aware, we're going to clean up those errors and publish, republish a new copy for you.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Mrs. Halliger?
Thank you for your minute presentation. It was a good update, and actually, I would like to see the next time, more around the actual program itself, around the culture, around those types of activities. I mean, because the data is one thing, but I really want to understand more, what are we doing, you know, the practices that we're doing to get to some of this, you know, the data here? And so, you know, of course, looking at this, you know, it's a bit daunting still that we've got, especially in our feeder pattern in the DAEP process of our Willow Ridge, Hightower, and Marshall High Schools. You know, one of the things that, you know, and I mentioned this before, maybe a couple years back, but, and Grelle and I, actually, when I first started, something that my child would get in trouble for at one school, her child, my nephew, would get in trouble for at her school, and that's two different sides of the district. And so, you know, I wish we could, I swear, I don't want anybody to call me on this. Don't send me emails. I mean, I wish we could just blow up all these boundaries and just put everybody up and just kind of mix them all up to see how it all really works. But one of the things I'm concerned about is that, especially we have students that are getting in trouble for whatever reasons they are, I can't imagine that all these students here, which I believe in trauma-informed care here, but that all these students, this fifty-six percent, fifty-one percent of students are trauma-induced, right? I just don't think that that's what's happening there, right? So, trying to understand, I mean, I would like to see a little bit more data of what kind of, what kind of infractions are we talking about that's causing a mandatory DAEP placement? And, you know, and I've challenged the district myself personally with my own child on certain words and, you know, must-have versus, you know, shall and those kind of things. And I know we've changed the policies to reflect some of those things, but I'm challenged with those numbers, and I would like to actually see the data here. But more importantly, I want to see, what are we doing to support the kids as well? So, there's two places, I want to make sure that I know that, we want to support our teachers. If there's something going on in the classroom, something's going on at school, we want to make sure that our teachers feel supported by the district and that they're getting the support they need with the children that are in the classroom. Because one of the things that we have said with some of the numbers that have gone down, what I'm hearing, especially on, a lot on the west side of the district, is that, but they're not doing anything about it. You know, they're not doing anything about the kids or whatnot. Somehow, the teacher's not feeling that there's no kind of real consequence to the kids. So, I want to understand why am I hearing that as often as I'm hearing, especially with some of these numbers here? As well as, what are we doing to support the kids? I want to understand the, how we utilize our social workers, and I'm glad you've mentioned some of the social workers in this presentation, but I think you more or less focused on the trauma-informed practices to do that. But there's a lot of challenges our kids are having, and how do we support them from a social worker or counseling, especially after an event? Do we check up on the kid to make sure that, you know, it doesn't have, it's not a repetitive issue, especially maybe for, you know, we have some type of guideline around, hey, if we get a kid in here more than once, I mean, maybe two, three times, I don't know what the guideline is, what that threshold would be. But who's actually talking to them besides the administrator, telling them that you're going to go into DAEP or ISS or OSS? How are we utilizing our social workers and our counselors at the school to figure out what's really going on here that, you know, Addie is having issues, continues to have issues here? Because I think, I think that is a major gap. I think our kids are going through a lot at school right now, and we've got to figure out how to help them assist them in that process. And so, I would like to see us utilize our social workers and our counselors more in that practice. Because I know for a fact, my personal, my child that's in school now, he, the only time that he's going to see a counselor or a social worker is if he's got an ARD. Okay, so, but he's had challenges throughout the time, throughout, you know, throughout the school year. So, when does he see a counselor again around some of those challenges that he's had to make sure that, hey, he's keeping up with whatever's going on, he's not going to make those same type of decisions, those kind of things? Or even a touch base with the parent outside of just the annual ARD? I mean, what are we doing there? I think that's important, especially because, because I bet you these numbers are repetitive. I think that's important, especially because I bet you these numbers are repetitive kids, too. A lot of these are repetitive kids.
Yeah, and I think, so what I hear you asking for, and which we've talked about as we started this process, is it's, there's a need to go a little bit deeper with the data to better understand the things that you're asking, the why. And so, we've talked about, you know, we have some resources in the district to do that, but perhaps utilizing someone like Region Four to come in and help us really dig deep and help us analyze the data in ways that, that we may not have the resources, or just the time right now to take care of that, because we're implementing these things. But then also, to look, to come back and provide you information on more of the programming aspects of really describing what we do with PBIS and helping you understand it. You know, we have, our campuses are expected to have a monthly student support team meeting, which is where they talk about kids and what's going on and the problems, and they actually put specific plans in place for kids that are challenged. They bring in the social workers, or the counselors, or any of the appropriate staff members that are involved with these kids. So, things like that, that I think will be important for you guys to better understand the actual day-to-day programming and things that we do to support kids, and then also, what are some things that we probably need some additional resources to keep up?
Yeah, and from me, thank you. And from me, it's the, make sure all of our teachers and administrators really understand and demonstrate the PBIS system the same way throughout our district. Because as I'm sitting here, I've got, received a text from people in the audience who are telling me that, I bet you they're not reporting things on the west side of the district. Now, these are parents that are here today, that live on the west side, they're saying that some of these things are not getting reported. Their children come home and they'll say, hey, this happened, this has happened, but no one is, no one is reporting, either having consequences to those students, they're not seeing a consequence to those students. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's interesting, because we have a, I remember a principal told me one time, you know, I'm used to the correctional system, especially when dealing with African-American students and African-American schools, predominantly African-American schools. And I was really, really taken aback by that situation, because I said, this is not the correctional system. But sometimes, we go into the mindset, just because we are dealing with African-American kids or Hispanic kids, that I have to deal with them in a, with a different, with a different lens, a different, you know, I want to say something else, but y'all will give me, a different, a different discipline measures. We have to, I mean, that's all we see, we put them in a certain box immediately. I'm not, I'm not negating the things that definitely need the proper attention and the proper DAP placements there. But I know for a fact, when we look at certain people, we tend to do different things. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr.
He's wanting to make sure.
Ms. Rosenthal.
Thank you. So, Ms. Brewster, could you give us an example? You talked about example of, you're talking about behavior management rather than discipline management. So, could you give an example of something going on in a classroom that would exemplify, you know, what teachers, what teachers should be doing as far as behavior management, rather than, you know, just assigning discipline?
So, as part of the PBIS framework, teachers are trained in CHAMPs and use a CHAMP system to share expectations with students. When this assignment has begun, what should the conversation level be? How do you ask for help? If you need support, you need to go to the restroom, how should you do that? If you need to sharpen your pencil, how do you do that? So, those are all positive behavior supports that tell the child in advance, if this should happen, this is the way I should handle it to keep this classroom safe and smooth. And so, that's what we have done for many years, is use CHAMPs in the classroom. And our efforts now are simply geared toward reinforcing that, even on an individual campus if we need to, as Deana said, by visiting campuses every nine weeks, specific campuses every nine weeks. But CHAMPs is clearly understood by our teachers in the district as a PBIS support system for helping our children be successful in the classroom.
Okay. So, I learned that as basically classroom management, you know, setting the expectations and rules and whatnot. But what does a teacher, what do we expect a teacher to do when they're trying to present a lesson, or they're working, you know, kids are working in groups and they're just, they're just not focused at all, or they're being disruptive? I mean, you know, we hear, Rick Morris isn't here, but we talk about this all the time. About three years ago, there were two ladies here crying their eyes out because their kids couldn't learn. And, you know, kids weren't being disciplined, and I hear the same thing that Ms. Heliger's saying, that there's a lot of things that students are just getting away with, and it's being disruptive, because, you know, we like to say that, well, you know, kids can't learn if they're not in the classroom, well, that's true, but the other kids that are trying to learn, they have a right to learn, too. They have a right to an education also. So, you know, I'm just curious, is the, you know, what we do specifically in cases where kids are being disruptive? Is there a push to keep kids in the classroom? Are we, are we okay with removing kids from classrooms when they're being disruptive and they can't be controlled? I understand that it's fine to talk to the kids and say, look, you know, this is what's wrong, da-da-da-da, can you, you know, can you stay on task? Can you, you know, that's fine, you know, give kids chances, I get that, but I do hear a lot that, you know, that there's a lot of disruption going on, so.
And I'll just, I'll just follow up with that one, you know, one of the things that we do within PBIS is that we, you know, have conversations, and we have conversations, and we teach the campuses to have conversations, just like you talk about, so that we're making sure that we understand our discipline policies and what our, our discipline code of conduct and our manager, you know, the way that we have decided what we're going to do in our district. And then we talk about, what does that look like in the classroom? And we have conversations with teachers about, you know, when is enough enough, and what does this look like? So that we're all on the same, I guess, that we kind of can talk through what the expectation would be, is that when is a redirect, and when is it too much, you know, interference with the learning and so disruptive? And then when we do have to remove them, which we completely understand that kids will have to be removed from the classroom, but how can we use an approach that's a little bit, you know, using some of our restorative practices, and that we just don't send kids to ISS and they sit there and do their work and don't talk, and, but we also use a teach piece there to kind of reflect on what happened, how could you have done that better? And then there's a variety or a continuum of restorative practices that we can use to help that student to reintegrate back in the classroom. And so, we absolutely want to make sure that we are removing kids that are being disruptive. It's, the important piece is that we talk at campuses and we talk, and we define those behaviors and define what's in the code of conduct and how we're going to implement those, and that, so that we are consistent with those practices. And it's a challenge, and so, we know we're not there. That's why some of this work together, we believe, is so important between the PBIS groups and our Student Affairs Division, so that we can, you know, we can speak through those challenges.
So, how do, in general, obviously, it varies, but in general, how do our teachers react to some of the training and whatnot on, you know, positive behavior and whatnot? Are they generally accepting of it? Do they, do you get a lot of pushback? Are we getting better? Are they incorporating it into their classroom cultures? How would you say it's working? I mean, you know, obviously, we see numbers, but again, if, they're numbers.
Right. Well, I mean, I mean, that's kind of, that's a loaded question. I mean, it is working in some places, absolutely. We have some campuses that are doing, and some parts of campuses, you know, you can see a grade, a team, a grade level. But one of the things that, when we talk about PBIS, it's a mind shift, so it's kind of like special ed, like inclusion, we have to really work on those pieces. And so, you know, some of those, some of the teachers, I would say, are absolutely wanting more help, wanting more resources, and can embrace this. And some of our teachers may be a little bit frustrated, because their own personal philosophy is different than the philosophy that we're, that we're trying to help us understand.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. You have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Dr. Dupree, is this going to be included in our, the accountability system that we're developing for Fort Bend IST?
You know, the design team around the campus, the community-based accountability system will be responsible for those recommendations, but my guess and expectation would be there would be components of this that are included.
Okay, who's responsible for it?
The design team that's worked, is bringing forth the recommendations.
Okay, who's on the design team? Who is that?
There's a number of people on the design team. I know that Ms. Grail is going to be serving on the design team, and there are several administrators at the high school and the elementary level. We've got teachers, and we've got central office administrators as well. And so, working through the seven pillars of a community-based accountability system, one of which is safe, school safety and security. So, absolutely, there would be some definitive work around PBIS structures and what would go into accounting to our community, the safety and security measures in our schools.
All right, thank you.
And then. Mr. Rice, let me just comment, I will carry that message to the team, because I'm on that. I haven't met with them yet, but I will definitely carry that message. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Dr. Dupree, Dr. Hill was commenting that some of this training, we had to have discussions about whether or not it should be mandatory, and so, I would like to ask you, why wouldn't it be mandatory? And instead of studying this more, why can't we just go out and talk to the principals and teachers now? Why do we have to study it more? And you were talking about bringing this program to us and explaining, I really wish you would have done that tonight. So, I mean, sometimes I think we study everything to death, so we're big on studying, but we're short on action. So, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Well, no, I think based on what you've heard, I think you've, you know, I think that's how, what you're responding to, so, because there are a few notes I've made that I think I would like to add, I think, Mr. Rice, that come to this. I cannot stress enough how many conversations we're having and the level of conversations we're having, and the action. I mean, if you look at some of the data, you can see we have reduced many of these discipline types by over fifty percent over the last several years. So, our action is paying off. And the biggest shift we're having to work toward, though, is getting out of the punishment mindset and into the consequences, growth, and development mindset. And because the board has approved goals that say students will own and be responsible for their behavior, that means we have to teach students, not just punish them. It's, in many ways, we're parenting children. I mean, if we think about our own children, you can spank them, as I did mine for many, many years, then I realized that wasn't the best way to help them learn how to behave, and the same thing happens in schools. Of course, what comes with that, when you have five thousand-plus teachers, and as Deana mentioned, different philosophies, and frankly, to the benefit of the teacher, they're all very stressed and very busy, because they've got a lot of kids with special ed, GT, ELL, they have all the full array, and then a full complement of behavior issues to go with it. So, I give a lot of grace to teachers as they're navigating this road. We have to keep persistently training and shifting a culture, and shifting a mindset, but that involves systems around lots of things, not just behavior and discipline. Because the work on GT and special education helps teachers be able to build more capacity, to build the relationships and to work with the students. So, I think we've, you know, because I hear myself, the perception that we're just managing numbers, and some principals are not reporting. Well, the minute we hear those things, if we can ever validate it, that's a serious documentable issue with any leader who's not reporting student misbehavior. Because that's not how we're going to solve the problem. We have to know the facts, we have to have data. If students are misbehaving, we have to deal with it. And I think, to me, this is, this is one of the issues that's at the heart of equity. That is also in our board goals, is that every student will have equitable access. That includes the student who has behavior problems, keeping them in the classroom and keeping them learning. It also pertains to the student who is trying to learn and study while other kids are acting a fool and causing a disruption. So, we've got to look at the needs of all the students. The heart of it all is the teacher, their classroom management skills, their ability to build relationships. We have thousands of teachers who are doing a remarkable job and do not refer a single student, even in the most challenging environments, because they know how to do it and they're good at it, and it's important to them. Then we have other teachers who struggle with it, because they may have the heart and the concern, but they struggle with the skills. And so, that's where we've got to train them. And we have others who just have the mindset, get them out of my room. And we've got to keep working with those teachers to understand that mindset and help to shift that mindset. So, there, this is very complex, but I, but I just couldn't let this conversation end without expressing, I'm regularly engaged, I mean, even with trauma-informed care. So, when you hear studying, we're not studying long, because I've told staff, I expect us to start seeing components of trauma-informed care by the end of, by January. We're not going to go full bore, but there's things we can do. Ms. Heliger brought up something significant about social workers and counselors. And this, Mr. Rice, you're the master of school finance, and you understand the implications as this entire board does, that we need social workers, we need counselors, many, many more, many more than we have. The ones we have today are stretched far too thin, and they feel blessed if they can touch a kid that's on their, that's one of their clients or patients, or whatever you want to refer to it, once every four weeks. And these kids need regular contact and proactive contact with a counselor and social worker, not, oh, he's in trouble again, let me rush over there and see how I can help. They've got, they need that contact, they need the relationship with that person to help them heal and grow, therapeutic in nature. And so, you know, this is something that's very important to me, it's important to our team, and because we've determined, you know, we've talked about literacy last week, literacy and this issue, behavior, are the two most critical issues we've got to manage. And we're, we've invested a lot, we're getting point-on-point with it, and we're going to drive in a very focused way into the future, because this is where we're going to make it or break it. These kids that are, I mean, I am very proud that to look and say, we only had eighty-two kids that had a mandatory DAP out of seventy-six thousand students, and thousands and thousands of African-American students, it's eighty-two. So, the numbers are very small, but still, each of them represents a child whose future is not going to be bright, who's going to be a drain on society if we cannot help them learn to manage themselves now to be successful in school. So, we, we're, you'll be hearing much more about this, and we're going to, there'll be some things we'll ask you to approve and things as we move forward, but just, I want you to know, this is very important to all of us.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Dupree, information. Thank you all for the presentation. Look here, look forward to hearing more in the future. I wanted to make a comment real quick to the board members, we have a lot going on in closed session this evening, so.
We have one more.
I'm so sorry. Skipping ahead, we are going to hear another information item about the emergency declaration purchase update. Do we have anything?
Yes, sir, thank you. I will make it quick, and I would like to report that all vendor contracts are finalized, and we have received invoices for all those contracts. We also have already paid nine out of the thirty-eight vendors that we utilized during Harvey in full, and our plan is to go ahead and pay all vendors, and for me to present a final report to you all in October.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. All right. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and those sections listed in the agenda, and for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.